All right.
All set.
Good afternoon, I'm now gonna call a Wednesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Of the Norfolk County Commissioners to law. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three. An act making appropriation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension, the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Mass Open Meeting Law. General, Mass General Act, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. I'll ask you all to rise and join me in.
Let's do it.
Stand by. The United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We call a roll, Commissioner State.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Colin. And Commissioner Shea, we have a forum. Present. We have no executive session today. Number four minutes, the open session meeting of November eighth, twenty twenty-three for approval.
I move approval of the meeting minutes of November eighth, that presented.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote, number five. Minutes of the open session meeting, executive, of executive session meeting of November eighth.
Yes, Chairman, I'll move approval of the meeting minutes of the executive session of eleven-eight with stipulation not to relate to such time as it may resolve.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you. Number six, appointments. We have none today.
Do we have any?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We have a.
Okay.
We have some one thirty.
More business.
Okay. More business, okay. No, no appointments. Uh, number seven, public comment session. Each meeting, we have a session on our ballot, on our agenda, for public comment, allow anyone out in Zoom land ask for, to speak to us on public comment session, or come in and visit and address the body. Director Colin, do you have anybody on public comment?
I do not.
Is there anyone out in Zoom land that has any public comment? Last call for public comment. Hearing none, we'll go to number eight, whole business. Resolution of the Registry of Deeds, fire insurance claim. Director Colin, will you give us a brief explanation?
Certainly. Uh, Commissioners, back in July, um, we had a discussion relative to the status of the, um, final claim on, um, the ball fire that occurred in the Registry of Deeds on February sixth, twenty twenty-one. Um, the Register had promoted a, a claim totaling just over a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars in microfiche that have been allegedly destroyed in that event. Um, during that meeting, it was, uh, discussed, among other things, the need to have the insurance company review the claim, um, and consider it for, um, release or payment to the county. We have received notice from the insurance company that they are indeed providing payment, um, for this particular claim in the amount of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, which I believe was the amount the Register had compiled, um, for an estimate associated with the microfiche loss. This afternoon, we are up against a timeline to, um, to accept and decline this payment associated with the claim. During the July meeting, there was some discussion relative to additional funds the Registry of Deeds has secured to offset the loss from this particular event. I believe it was noted that the Register received over two hundred thousand dollars back in September of twenty twenty-one from the state for his technology fund for the exact same loss. So there are funds associated with, um, relief if the Register chooses to do it with the tech fund, um, but before he was the option to consider accepting. The claim payment from our insurance company. One item I would just like to call attention, excuse me, to the Commissioners on is in the event you do elect to accept the payment, will have an impact on the county's premium. Um, our insurance agent, Charlie Rourke, informed me in some party packet that, um, insurance companies look at losses when they quote policies. If you have had large losses, then they increase the premium. Traditionally, five years of loss history is both looked at and it is compared with the five years of the premium. Charlie writes, having a claim of over a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is this case, will impact the renewal premium with an increase of premium above an increase you would see without it. In today's market, I would estimate it to be fifteen percent at the minimum. Our FY twenty-four premium for property insurance is budgeted at two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars even. Fifteen percent increase as a result of accepting this claim would add another thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars minimum to any future costs associated with that. Um, expense. So it is before you to accept or decline the payment. That's the background. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may.
Commissioner State.
Yeah, through you, of course, through the chair, uh, to John. So let me make sure I got this right. What's the actual amount of money we might be getting if we accept it? Is it one fifty or is it something higher?
One fifty-nine, five twenty-seven, fifty.
Okay, so it's like close to a hundred sixty.
Yes.
More or less. Okay. All right, so that's number one. Number two, do you know, um, I mean, as a homeowner, let's say, I know every year, no matter what I do, my insurance goes up. I haven't filed a claim in like thirty years, but it keeps going up. So are we expecting our budget to go up next year anyways? And if so, would it be three, five percent?
I haven't received any updates for the FY twenty-five quote. We probably won't meet with Charlie until early twenty twenty-four to understand what those rate tables went like. So I don't have, I don't have any information about, all things being equal, what our insurance would look like next year yet, for twenty-five.
The reason of my question, as I made, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes.
Is that, um, property insurance, you know, insurance goes up anyway. So with the fifteen, would that be separate than any nominal increase? Or is that like, you know, well, you're gonna go up now, we're gonna, it's gonna be maybe fifty?
He's looking at it as all things being equal, if nothing else changed, your insurance would go up fifteen percent minimum as a result of accepting the claim.
So that doesn't even include an increase for next year?
That's what I'm saying.
Because I can't.
So it does, in fact, so our, our insurance may go up, could have gone up.
Independent of anything we do.
That's what I was trying to get at. Thank you. Okay. So then the last question, I think. So, um, right, we, have we received money for, as a county? Have we received money for this particular claim?
So to date, the county has received two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. I believe I put that in the packet that you received back in July, you know, second.
I think you did.
It was about two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, so by, if we accept it, we get additional money for the county, but our insurance is probably gonna go up. Am I right?
That's correct.
Looking at that.
That's correct.
If we don't accept it, we already have the money, what, from another source?
Correct.
I remember there's a discussion on that.
Yes.
So we're not, the registry or whatever would be okay.
Correct.
Because they do have money for their needs. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. And we'd save on our insurance.
That's right.
Okay, interesting.
Okay.
And the separate money that was received from the tech fund was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, uh, the registry not only is made whole by the one fifty-nine, but they also receive an extra eighty-one thousand dollars. So they've had a huge windfall already.
So if we took the one, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are you done?
Yes.
It'd be polite. If, if we took the one fifty-nine, where would that go? Would that be, we've already, the registry has that money already, the whole, am I right?
Yes.
So would that be?
Well, wherever the money goes, uh, we still have to pay an increase in premiums of thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Plus dollars.
That's true.
If you think about it, over, um, over five years, we're already down thirty thousand bucks. So I'm scared because of that. So each year, each, each year, we chip away, uh, thirty-seven, five in, into that one fifty-nine it would receive. So over, so as, as, once you're over four years.
That's true.
You're, you're, you're paying something you don't have to pay.
Right. I didn't see it. And they don't, if that, I thought, thought that was interesting. In, in the letter here, he said, it looks at a five-year window. This is our first claim, and like, how many years? We haven't got that many, have we?
I don't have any experience beyond the last two years.
I, I, I have some brief knowledge of that because it was my first year here.
Right.
Sixteen. There were, there was a claim from March fifteenth storm.
Yeah, we had so much snow.
Where, and, 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 and again, the damage was at the registry. And we had some other damages too, but.
Okay.
But it was, it was, I don't think it took five years to get the money, but.
Wow.
We, and we had a nationally ranked, uh, bristle from Petraselli or something, and I remember it was that thick, and we were back and forth and back and forth.
So we're saying we put, we put a claim in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and, and the work was done. I mean, if you notice.
How many years ago was that?
It had to be sixteen. It was from the March of fifteen storms.
Okay.
That whole two weeks, because I had it at my house.
Right. No, my, my point, so, okay, yeah, that's good to know.
It was on the books for about two years, and Frank was back and forth and back and forth.
But that's like six years ago.
Yes.
So if you look at the window of five years, I think I'm assuming correctly, there's no claim. So it's, it's just, it kind of bothers me. I'm, I suppose I'm, I'm ranting. But I mean, we put one claim in, and right away, they're gonna raise this up.
Sure.
It just doesn't seem fair. No, you put one claim in. What's the point of having insurance? You know, really? You put it in and you, you can't win. It's just, you know, unfortunate. But, okay. I've said enough. Thank you for educating me on that. Thank you.
No problem.
We need to act in a timely manner.
We have to inform the insurance company what your intentions are.
Before.
I'll make a motion.
What were your thoughts? Yeah, Peter.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny the pending and final adjustment of the claim TNT zero-one-six-three-three-zero-two-dash-one-dash-L-dash-two in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
A motion to deny the claim?
To deny that we take that one. Yes.
To, okay.
That's, okay.
Well, we're not denying the claim. Would it be refused?
No, but, but we're declining to take that money.
Refuse to take the check, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to note this for the record, I'm strongly concerned about the fact that we have to pay extra money. I'm just not happy, but I will second. It makes sense. It, it, fiscally, it makes sense. We have the money already.
Yeah.
So the registry is not hurt, correct?
The registry.
They've got the money, the, from another source.
The registry received the money from another source, they're made whole, and they have an additional eighty-one thousand dollars from that service source.
You're right. In five years, that would be.
We're paying money.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay. All right, I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to refuse the most recent insurance check of a hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Five hundred and twenty-seven, Joe.
Five, okay, one-five-nine, five-two-seven, and fifty cents. As a result of a claim for the fire at the registry deeds. Nine-twenty-one-twenty-one.
No.
On, yeah.
Event of the fire was on February sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah, right.
We were made whole on some of it. Okay, I'm looking at my notes from February sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
Yeah.
This action is, this vote is taken as a result of reviewing all of our, uh, issues on this matter, and
and the fee would go up.
It appears that the fees would go up fifteen cents a year, which we're trying to avoid, and, uh.
We're saving money by not taking the money.
Yeah.
Saving money by not taking the money, and we're also been made a whole one. Replacement has been done at the registry. Do we all understand this? We're not gonna do this every other week.
We got it. Yeah.
But it's been, okay.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's three to zero to refuse the money. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Number nine, personnel matters with consideration. I believe there are two. One at the registry and one at the Norfolk Aggie.
Right, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if you want, I'll make two motions here. First one, the Registry of Deeds, uh, move that we approve the notice of resignation for Amanda Lepolus of, uh, Weymouth, Mass, at her rate that was stated, and the effective date of her resignation is eleven-nine-twenty-three, so moved.
Sorry. Motion made, second in all favor. It is a vote. At the agricultural school.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, move notice of regrade for Jessica DeBolt of Ashford, Connecticut, at the rate stated, effective eight-twenty-eight-twenty-three. So moved.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
That's a heck of a ride.
I was just saying that. That's what I was talking about. Was that right?
Payroll expense warrants approval.
Wow, okay. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll move the following. Warrant list of eleven-fifteen-twenty-three, uh, number one, twenty-four-dash-nineteen, payroll to county, move approval of a hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars, sixty-five cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Second, twenty-four-dash-nineteen, parentheses ten, payroll to school, move approval of three hundred sixty-four thousand, forty-two dollars, ninety-seven cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
And lastly, uh, for the expense for the county, eleven-dash-three-twenty-four, move approval of one hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred eleven dollars, seventy-six cents, so moved.
Second. In second, in all favor.
Uh, that concludes that.
That concludes the payroll expense warrants for today. Number eleven, report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, Director Colin.
Thanks, Chairman. Just a couple of items for the Commissioners. There are no ARPA awards today, as you know. Um, in a few minutes, we'll be discussing a contract award associated with, um, the county's ARPA services. Um, but I wanted to draw your attention to, um, two things. We had our monthly ARPA meeting with our peers from the other counties yesterday. Always a productive call. We are, I think it's safe to say, all the counties are increasing their, um, awareness and need for messaging, uh, what's happening in twenty twenty-four with our respective counties to close out the grant before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, I'll be drafting a letter, um, that broadly describes, um, specific data in Norfolk County communities, but for this group to review ahead of time, um, how we want to, uh, inform the counties how to handle awarded funds, the funds that have not yet been awarded but allocated, and what to expect after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, the group would like to see the letter because I think they have an interest in, um, copying it and using it, um, for their own messaging. Uh, my goal is to have that out before December first, um, so that they can see it before the Commissioners meet in Bristol County on December eighth. Um, so that message will be very critical, uh, as it sets the county, um, in, in a position to close out these grants. Um, furthermore, yesterday, uh, I finalized a letter with the assistance of Clifton Larson Allen, announcing, um, to all the Norfolk County communities, um, three new spending categories that I think I've previously mentioned to the Commissioners that had been approved by Congress. This, um, correspondence going out today, I think Bill's sending it out, um, informs the communities that, um, expenditure categories eight, nine, and ten are now open. Um, I think I mentioned I don't expect a thundering herd of applications associated with these categories. They're rather limiting. They're, they have a purpose, and one can imagine they probably would fit larger, um, units of government, um, more than they would ask. But yet, um, in the interest of keeping the grant is open, available, um, and useful to the communities, it's gonna be heading out to them. Um, we're gonna be setting up a portal to have the elements and all the details associated with each, um, new category available so they can read it and understand how it can be used. And we hope to have that on the portal by next week. Um, and in the same note, I'm, um, informing them that, um, we are going to be sending out that all-important message in January regarding the grant. So, um, a lot of attention being paid at this point to the, uh, position that we will all find ourselves in a year from now, um, but the planning starts now. So overall, pretty good news in terms of collaborative interest and common messaging, and more on that later when the letter is drafted. But for now, the communities should be aware by today about these new categories, and we look forward to hearing from any interested parties. One final note, I just want to let the Commissioners know, and for the record, um, we remain in constant, um, dialogue about the town of Brookline. Um, the Commissioners may know that is the only community in Norfolk County that has not received an award. They have a very large grant before us right now for five and a half million dollars in premium pay. Um, it requires, um, a lot of rework, according to Clifton Larson. I spoke to them this morning on the Zoom. Um, the content, the payroll, the material that supports the grant request needs rework. It has been sent, sent back to Brookline weeks ago, uh, between Bill Galvin, uh, CLA, Mr. Buckley, and myself. We have all done our own best to contact our respective stakeholders in Brookline to get their attention, to find out what is their plan, uh, because beyond this particular grant, uh, Brookline has, um, approximately seven million dollars more on top of that. And with a year to go, we're concerned that they have not embraced the opportunity to, um, start sending us applications. Um, we know that they're very active. Um, they appear to have done a very thorough job locally with their community needs, um, and wants for ARPA. Their online ARPA portal looks very good. It appears as though they sent out a, a fair amount of money using their own NEU money. So they're not, uh, strangers to a process, but for some reason, we're just not getting a breakthrough moment. Um, I also spoke with the Advisory Board Chair this morning. She is, you know, is from Brookline to alert her of this, and, um, I think she's gonna intend to try to speak to the Select Board also to find out which, what is the plan. Um, so I'm concerned only because of the clock. Uh, we've been patient with Brookline to try to get them to come to the table, and, um, hopefully we can get their attention pretty soon.
I think, I think we have extended them every opportunity. Uh, it's almost a matter of taking the horse to the water. I mean, you're doing everything you can.
I'm trying.
And there's a lot going on, uh, probably left not said, so there's lots of reasons for that, and I think you're doing the best you can.
Yeah.
So thank you for what you're doing.
So just, it's the last community, so, um, we want, we want them to, uh, participate.
May I ask two questions?
Colonel.
So the first thing is, uh, you mentioned the joint meeting December eighth. Have we got a venue yet on that? Is that still?
You know, right before I came in the meeting, Maria Gohn sent an email, and I haven't opened it. And I, and I, I don't know if, uh,
Looking for that.
Uh, Commissioner Mitchell had selected it, but I'm, I'm guessing it's in that email.
Okay. And I wanted to get a follow-up. When you get a chance, maybe the next meeting, there were two communities that were cited for auditing. Never mind not collecting the two audits being done.
Yep.
I wanted to see how the progress was being made on that.
So.
When you get a chance.
One of them, one of them, we gave a pass for a thirty-day, uh, reprieve due to some, um, exigencies occurring in that community right now. Um, so that monitoring audit will not commence until the end of November.
Okay.
The other community, um, they gave a report the other day, and they said it was fine. Uh, there weren't any material findings or concerns. Um, so it seems as though that other community, um, um, survived the review without any.
Who's doing that? Yes, another one, Mr. Chairman. Who's doing the actual audit?
Evelyn Martucci from Clifton Larson Allen.
So that's the.
Level one.
Is that the new one, or is that the?
No, that's the primary.
Primary, okay. That's what I thought. So now, let's say they find something irregular, but they tell the town, and say you gotta.
Take corrective action.
Take corrective action. So this is done, almost like a preemptive strike.
Yes.
Because we're gonna be doing this, what, in two oh, two-five, or whatever it would be, the end of, when the program ends, are we supposed to be doing this before it goes up to the Treasury?
Well, effectively, yes, I know where you're going. So effectively, what this does, you're right, it is preemptive. Um, we, we, we provide quarterly reports and annual reports on the progress of the grant to the federal government for the last two years, two and a half years.
Okay.
Um, feds can turn around at any time and select us for an audit. What this is doing is it's, 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 it's ensuring that the controls we put in place with the communities to maintain records, um, contracts associated with the awards, payrolls, and anything else that touches the awards are all in place. So the monitoring is affirming that the communities are doing what they said they were going to do, so that in the event we do get audited, we stand a better chance of withstanding any kind of criticism or findings. Um, certainly, as you point out, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, monitoring will continue. It's just gonna continue until the grant is over, and then our work is done, and we effectively hold those files, I think, for seven years, um, for any potential federal audit.
So did Clifton La, uh, one more, last one. Could Clifton Larson, like, we had two communities, I know that.
Yeah.
So then, then they're gonna be wrapping it up by the footy end of the year.
Yeah.
Let's just say.
Yeah.
So now, in the spring, will they pick another two, and then another two, and they'll keep doing that?
Yes, the monitoring is not new. They have been doing several to date.
Okay.
But they, they typically do, I think, two per quarter.
Good. Excellent.
Random, by the way.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The American Rescue Plan Act to twenty twenty-one. Number twelve, ARPA warrants, we have none this week, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna jump down to number fourteen because it's one thirty. Uh, we have no bid opening, so we won't be doing that. We are gonna have some contract awards, which we'll get to after we do Page Street openings in Stoughton. So back to thirteen. The quest for Norfolk County Commissioners to duly note the petition to alter by discontinuance a portion of Page Street county layout of October twenty-second, eighteen seventy-two, in Stoughton, Mass, filed as docket number two oh three six, and vote to hold a hearing on Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at one thirty, at the County of Norfolk Administration Office's six-one-four High Street Denim. Notice of said hearings will be published in the Enterprise and the Patriot Ledger. Commissioners, Patrick is standing by. There's a note in our pile about it. This is work being done on Page Street. Patrick's note was dated November thirteenth. We're gonna, basically, Patrick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to the next level, so to speak, by having a public hearing in three weeks.
Yes, Chairman Shay.
Okay, so we're going in the right direction?
Yes.
Okay. So today's vote will only be to, uh.
Hold a public hearing?
To hold a public hearing, and then we're, we're gonna put it in the two papers in the office, we'll, uh, take care of it on December twentieth.
So you want a motion to schedule a hearing, Mr. Chairman? Okay. Um, I'll move it if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move, we schedule a hearing on the alteration by discontinuance of a portion of Page Street in Stoughton, uh, regarding the, uh, said petition that has to do with Norfolk County layout of Page Street dated October twenty-two, eighteen seventy-two. Amazing. In Stoughton, Mass, filed as docket two, number two oh three six, that the Commissioners hold a hearing on the petition of town of Stoughton acting through its board, um, and thereon, taking the action related thereon. Hearing will be held December twentieth, on Wednesday, at the county office here in Denham, Mass. Um, that should do it.
Second. Motion made and seconded that the Norfolk County Commissioners duly note the petition to alter a discontinuous portion of Page Street dated October twenty-second, eighteen seventy-two, in Stoughton, Mass, and that a public hearing be scheduled on this matter on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one thirty PM, at the Registration Administrative Office Building, at six-one-four High Street. All in favor?
Hold, hold. Just for a second. Just for a second. I know I made the motion. Yes, you do. Isn't that the, uh, the week of Christmas? Talking about that meeting being at a different time or different, uh.
Is that the Wednesday of Christmas?
That's the week of Christmas. Did you realize that?
When, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah.
Christmas is on Saturday?
No, but we had talked, we had mentioned it, one of our meetings, that maybe on that one meeting, we might move the time, or have our different, uh.
It's the, Commissioners, it's the week before. The, the Wednesday before.
Yeah.
This is on a month. Maybe. Excuse you, I guess it's.
But the Christmas is not the Monday.
Christmas, I'm trying to say it's Christmas week, holiday week. I, I mean, I'm just saying it's, um, all right, well, we gotta meet, we gotta meet.
I mean, it's December twentieth, yes, it's Christmas week.
Yeah.
But I, I think we're gonna, we're, I mean, I, I'm in the opinion we're gonna have a regular meeting on the, on the twenty-third. Now, what happens between Christmas and New Year's, I can't make any promises, but if we can get this taken care of.
We're meeting the twenty-third, too?
No, the twenty.
The twentieth.
Oh, twenty, okay.
This is the twentieth. It's a regularly scheduled meeting. It's a regularly scheduled meeting.
Let's go.
We get, well, we gotta sell it now, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Well, that's why. No, that, that's why, Mr. Chairman. I was, I know we had talked about maybe altering the schedule because of that week, but.
I thought we were talking between Christmas and New Year's.
It's fine. We'll go with it.
Okay.
We'll go with it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. The call for the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this will remain on our docket. We'll have a public hearing on the twentieth at one thirty.
The, thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it. And, and, and we, we did a slight adjustment for the date so that Attorney Lopez could attend the hearing as well. So that's a little bit different than the schedule that we had previously submitted. Thank you.
Nancy, please, we're gonna do number fifteen, contract awards. Good afternoon, Nancy.
Hello.
What have we today?
We have a contract for a one-year, um, a one-year contract for golf cart concession for the Falls Recreation Facility. And the amount of fifty-five percent of the receipts under one hundred and sixty thousand will go to the golf course, and receipts over a hundred and sixty thousand, seventy-five percent will go to the golf course, and this will be prepared a one-year. And receipts over one hundred and sixty thousand, seventy-five percent will go to the golf course, and this will be for a period of one year.
Is this the same operator?
It is the same operator. It's the same carts. We, we went out for a, been out for one year because presently we have two thousand twenty-two carts. The two thousand twenty-three carts won't even be out till next spring, so we're looking to get two thousand twenty-four carts next year.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so that's the only bidder. Number one.
I want to move it.
Yes, sure, just.
I move it. We want the bid to County Club Enterprises?
Country, sorry.
Oh, it looks like county. Is it country? Okay.
It does say county.
It's right, country, country club enterprise. And the, the amount submitted and is outlined by purchasing agent, this bid is for one year. So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Reward the golf cart concession, or cart concession. Number B, number two, re-indexing services for a period of one year with two one-year options for renewal.
It is recommended to order contract for the re-indexing services to CoFile Technologies in the amount of two dollars and thirty-four cents per document. They were the only bidder.
They were the only bidder?
Yeah, who went out to shoot different, another company also.
Who, who's done this before?
CoFile did, actually, the person that works for CoFile worked for the company that previously did this back in two thousand and thirty.
Brown Rivers, Browns River.
It was Bob Gorenzer. He worked for
Bob Gorenzer's been around, I
Yeah.
Again, I'm putting my old hat on, clerks, yeah, good, good people. They changed the name. It was it was Browns River Technology for a hundred years.
And then it was something else. I think it was ACS when they last used them.
Okay, that's great.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Is it K O F I L?
CoFile, yes, K O F I L.
All right, so I'll move, you, I'll move it. I move we approve the, the contract for re-indexing services for one year with two one-year options renewed to CoFile Technologies at the amount of two thirty-five a document, as outlined by purchasing agent. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. To what, the re-indexing service contract for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew to CoFile Enterprises. Middlesex, I forget the name of the town. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Third today, level two reviewer for the ARPA program to replace the present level two reviewer. Do you want to speak to that, John?
I'll just give brief background, and then Nancy can go to the contract. Commissioners, as you may know, the county has hired Powers and Sullivan as an auditor. And as a result of that, they resign their position as level two reviewer on our ARPA grant program that they have been doing since twenty twenty-one. As soon as Powers and Sullivan vacated that, we began the search to find a suitable firm to perform the level two work in the ARPA grants. It was difficult, primarily because, as you know, the grant has approximately twelve to thirteen more months of activity to review grants. We were able to locate Jennifer Thompson from Capital Strategies. Jennifer does work in Plymouth County, I believe. We made contact with her. She gave us a book of work associated with the rates that are identical to what Powers and Sullivan was making. She is experienced in the ARPA world. She's been working with other communities I mentioned, and is very much looking forward to helping Norfolk County get through the last thirteen months of this award process. So this afternoon, before you, as Nancy is about to indicate, is a contract proposal, as I mentioned, under the same terms and conditions that Powers and Sullivan had, so there's no impact on our budget. They're willing to pick up the slack on the level two review for upcoming grants for ARPA. One footnote. They actually do consulting work for some communities to prepare grants for submission into various portals. They do work with two communities in Norfolk County, Plainville and I think Franklin's the other one. In any case where a grant comes from either of those communities that they have prepared, they will not be allowed to do level two review. We will use another firm to just handle those one or two awards as they commit. That is to avoid or maintain, I should say, fiscal independence. So we're aware of what their background is. They are as well. We've worked out a contingency. But we're very happy that Jennifer's prepared to work with us in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Commissioners.
Powers and Sullivan served as our level two reviewer right from the beginning. Now, they're going to be our auditor, correct?
Right.
Are they performing, though, level two review still for other counties?
Yes.
As part of that deal that we had to
Yes.
Get a better price?
Yes, yes.
Okay, they're allowed to do that.
Yes.
No problem. But they're going to be our auditor.
Yes.
And this lady with this organization will be the same price, same, no change. Fine, okay.
And, and if I may say, we mentioned last meeting, they've, they've been outside auditors to a number of Norfolk County communities, even more. And I think when this was originally proposed, speaking to them, they said, the outside audit is more what we do.
That's what I thought.
We're very happy with the federal work, et cetera, et cetera, but I, we think you can do both, but they said to make it clean and to
Yeah.
One or the other.
You know, we'll, we'll stop doing it.
The director telling us there might be a couple of conflicts, too. So at that point, we would just use
Correct. That's for the new one.
If it's a new one, right, for the new one.
Right.
For the new one.
If, okay.
Because these, but by and alive, this is going to be, they'll be able to handle most of our accounts.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I yield to Nancy, she has the contract.
Go ahead, Nancy, on the contract.
Yes, so this, this will be a contract for the quote from Capital Strategic Solutions for the ARPA level two review services. The project timeline is from the present and expected to last until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And as John stated, their pricing is in line with the price, with what we were paying Powers and Sullivan. Their pricing is attached on the second page.
The comments?
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to make a motion for. So I'll move, Mr. Chairman, that the Commissioners vote to approve for our level two review of the ARPA program, Capital Strategy Solutions LLC. Said work for them will begin effectively immediately with a timeline to be last until the program ends, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. And the rate is as attached and is outlined for their services, but it, most important to note, is consistent with our prior level two review. So moved.
Second, motion made and seconded. Do what, a level two reviewer for all ARPA programs? Two, what's the name of the company again?
It's called Capital Strategic Solutions LLC.
Capital Strategic Solutions LLC.
Moberg.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Nancy, you got anything else for us?
All set.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I want to, we're going to resolve it now.
All righty.
Okay. Okay, number sixteen, report of the county director.
I have a few very brief items, Commissioners. First, I wanted to extend my thanks to Michelle Abadini and Michelle Lyden. Both pulled off a successful wellness fair at the registry yesterday. We stopped by. It was busy. They, they held the fair from one to four, I believe. I checked in today. They had dozens of employees and retirees stopping in. Check with the Mayflower Health Group, Norfolk County Retirement System and other wellness coordinators. It's always good when we can bring the services directed to the employees and make it easy for them to gain access to answers to questions they may have. So thanks very much to Maureen and Michelle. Well done. I just wanted to note, today, we were supposed to receive Norfolk County Sheriff Patrick McDermott for a check-in. His office has communicated that due to unforeseen circumstances with his calendar, they're looking to reschedule in the next couple of months. We'll alert the commissioners when that date surfaces and place a back on an upcoming agenda. Finally, the employee handbook. I'd like to keep people informed of how we're progressing. As you know, we've already received the feedback from the department heads. Michelle has incorporated much of those edits. But in some cases, we have to loop back, and we have done so with legal counsel, specifically counsel associated with the schools to identify some answers to questions that the superintendent brought in. Very good questions, I might add, that we want to clarify and make sure that it's right and tight for coordination with the school's policies of their own, and so we should have some feedback within the next week or so. Once that is completed, we'll have one more internal read before we present it to the Commissioners for consideration. So we're targeting to have the employee handbook done by Christmas. That's our goal. That is why I have the session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's under the report of County Director?
That's it.
Number seventeen, emergency items topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate. I don't have I have one. I have a communication from Brian Howard, town manager of the great town of Randolph. They, this is a letter addressed to Paul Corners of Randolph, Mass, who is well-known to us as a member of our advisory board and a appointee of this board to the Norfolk Climate Board. It is my pleasure to reappoint you to serve as Randolph's representative on the Norfolk County Advisory Board. Your longtime service has been a tremendous benefit to both the town and the advisory board. The work you have done on our behalf and the relationships we have fostered with other municipalities will serve our town well. This reappointment will run through November one, two thousand twenty-six. Brian Howard, town manager.
So we're stuck with Corners?
We're stuck. I think now that you're on on the advisory board, he has the record.
Now he's got the record. I was hoping, I was hoping to hold on to that record.
I think he enjoys making records, but
Oh, yeah.
We're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. I had nothing further, however, we did talk last week very briefly about what are your wishes next week is the day before Thanksgiving.
Amazing.
I think
Time's flying.
Yep, time's flying. We're having fun, but we have some, you know, we're going to have a couple of ARPA awards next week?
Not likely. There are four in the queue, no, five in the queue right now. The total aggregated amount is about eight hundred thousand. They're, I believe they're ready for Jen Thompson, who will start looking at them as early as tomorrow. I wouldn't expect her to have a full grasp of the details by next week, so I would politely ask for her, you know, to give it an extra week to check in on those grants and be familiar with them. But one other option, of course, is if, I know our treasurer is on the line, Joria. When the commissioners do skip a week, it presents a challenge for warrants and pay in the event that the commissioners don't wish to be in person, and they want a more abbreviated schedule before the day of Thanksgiving, we could schedule just a purely remote meeting so that you can vote to approve warrants and move minor work along. That's what you're intending to do. It's a lighter workload for sure next week. But that's an option in case you wanted to consider that.
I'm available either way. I am too, and I will be here even if it's remote. I can come inside.
If there's a chance I might be getting a jumpstart to this, this is on my family.
Sure.
So I might join you remotely on that meeting.
That's fine. Then why don't we? Why don't we meet at one P M next week?
Schedule a regular meeting.
Change the time, or are you going to be regular time?
No, we'll keep everything the same.
I mean, you want to move that?
Whatever, whatever's good for you.
No, I'm fine. All right, let's call it one, and then we'll look at it.
It may not be in person.
We'll look at it further in the holiday season. Okay.
Great.
I don't want to leave anything undone either.
Commissioner, just before you adjourn, I just want to let you know I had Mr. Buckley send out a save the date to advisory board members. We are meeting in a month, December thirteenth, at the Aggie for the next advisory meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Busy December.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. All right, I'm motion adjourned, please.
We'll be adjourned, Mr. Chairman, at one fifty. So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at one fifty. Thank you very much. We'll have a regular meeting next week.